I will call to order the Dixon County Planning Commission meeting for June 8, 2023. Thank you all for being here. Commissioner Berry, will you lead our devotion?
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us together this afternoon here. Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We make good, sound decisions for the counties. Lord, we ask your blessings on each person that attends tonight. Lord, just be with them. Keep them safe throughout this night and as they travel back home. Lord, we thank you for the land we live in. We thank you for our freedom. We thank you for Jesus. In his name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Darnell, call the roll.
Todd Berry.
Here.
Tina Ferris.
Here.
Darren Green.
Here.
Todd Lindsey.
Here.
Robert Quals.
Here.
Tommy Brown.
Here.
Jeff Chase.
Here.
Shane Chandler. Gary Peeler.
Here.
Christie Sullivan. Patrick Reagan.
Here.
Robert Comer.
Here.
Vice Chairman, we do have a call.
Thank you so much. I want to welcome and recognize all the visitors in the room and remind you to please sign in, which is the signing sheet is on this table right here. So that will give us a record of who was here. So thank you for being here. I hope the commission has a chance to review the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve, correct, or amend them.
So moved, Colonel.
Moved by Commissioner Quals, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. All right, we will move into the agenda, starting with item one, preliminary plat for Ridgemont Reserve Subdivision Tax Map 101, parcel 6.00, 9.83 acres, Ridgecrest Drive and Rock Church Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 Agriculture, 10th District.
Okay, this was, uh, preliminary plat was surveyed by Christie surveying to create six new residential lots. Uh, we do have email confirmation from Michael Rogers, the Water Authority. There's a six inch water line that runs down both Ridgecrest Drive and Rock Church that will support the development. They will need one new fire hydrant. At this time, the surety has not been paid on. Charrington?
Thank you. Um, there were a few minor comments on, on the plat, and I don't know if anything has been resubmitted from the initial one that I, I looked at. Okay. So the first was to label the lot width at the minimum building setback line, and that's related to checklist item number six. The second is to please include the type of development intended for the six new lots. I mean, we can assume, but um, that's related to.
There is a note on there on that, I think.
Checklist item number 16.
Resident, it's a residential lots.
Okay. Um, number three, to remove the final plat certificates from the preliminary plat and instead affix the preliminary plat certificate. That's related to checklist item number 23. And the final one was please identify and label the side distance in both directions along any existing roads at any point where driveway or new road is proposed, and that's related to checklist item number 24. That was all.
Any other staff comments? What is the will of the commission? Motion to made to approve the preliminary plat for Ridgemont Reserve Subdivision with the staff comments and requirements. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Peeler. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Sounds like the ayes have it. We'll move on to item number two, site plan for the Brad Ford Storage Facility Tax Map 145, parcel 6.62.00, 1.33 acres, Highway 46 South, Dixon, Tennessee, C2 General Commercial, 7th District. Staff?
Okay, the site plan was done by XL Land Company, uh, to add more additional storage units to the property. Uh, this business was first started in 1996, a tire shop, and there was one 26 unit storage building in the back. Uh, it is now under new ownership, and they want to improve it. Uh, you'll see by some of the pictures, they put up a new chain link fence, uh, to make better security. Uh, there is no electricity or outdoor lighting on any of the building that exists, and they do not, do not want to add any to the buildings they're going to put in there. Uh, you'll see in the picture, there was a signpost and sign frame that they can reuse. Property itself is bordered by A1 property to the south and to the east, which has been the same farmland since 1996. They're asking that the existing fence can be used to suffice instead of having to use a buffer strip. Uh, the thinking on that is that property ever goes on the market, that's pretty prime commercial land for development. Charrington?
Thank you. There are three comments. Um, two are fairly minor. They're just kind of cleanup items. The first is that setbacks in C2 are not dependent on classification of the road. So the front setback can just be, um, reflect the 30 front, 30 foot front setback requirement. Um, that's checklist item number nine. Um, to indicator to note the size of the proposed parking spaces, which is a 10 by 20 minimum, but I understand, um, from speaking with Mr. Darnell, that there's not going to be an improvement of that parking lot. So the space, the area for parking was still.
Going to use it just for the office. I'll take it for right now. Yeah.
Remain the same. So if there are any striping or, you know, installation of parking spots, they do need to be properly sized. Um, and then the, what, um, was just referenced, the landscaping plan, which is checklist item number 16 is missing. Uh, but the applicant seeking relief from the requirement because this is an expansion of his, an existing use, uh, and that would be a determination made by the appropriate body.
All right. Thank you, Steph. What is the will of the commission?
I like, I went past this a couple of days ago, and I think, um, it's a prime development for adding more units. I'm the new boy on the block here, so I have a couple of questions, and if I'm asking something that is really simple and I should know, just let me know. Why, if, if we're going to have more units, there, there's going to be more traffic, more people in there, correct? Using the storage units?
Well, it'd be minimal traffic with storage versus retailing, or with retailing.
Right.
People constantly in and out.
Right.
Generally speaking, you know, I mean, if I have one vehicle in there.
My, my question for asking that is that there's no exterior lighting?
Right.
So this, this means it needs to be locked down. Uh, I'm, I'm just curious why there's no exterior lighting with more storage units, there are more of a chance that somebody's going to want to get in there at three o'clock in the morning.
That is a good question. If we do plan on adding lighting, it's going to be LED wall packs, and there'll be photo cell activated, so they'll be locked in today. They'll come on automatically at night. And the majority of it will be based on Highway 46. Uh, on the larger building when it's built, there will be like three LED wall packs on the backside of that building.
Okay, and there's nothing.
South, I guess.
And there's nothing in the existing regulations that says anything that they have to have lighting. I mean, I don't.
No, there's not. No, hang on a second.
We actually want to have lighting just for security.
Right.
You've got the mic for sure to hear your brother.
We didn't want to have, you know, lighting just for security reasons and safety too, when people are in there at night driving around and, you know, driveling to be able to see.
Right.
So, uh, and when we have cameras, we'll maybe have some lighting, you know, and stuff, so.
Okay, just for the clarification of staff, the applicant and the commission, section 3.140 of the zoning code states that a lighting plan shall be submitted with each site plan, showing all relevant outdoor lighting fixtures as well as the illumination and foot candles. Uh, is that your question, Mr. Chase?
Alright. So my question would be, do, should we have a lighting plan as part of the application? So it's, you know, to cross the Ts and dot the Is to make sure that you say you're going to do it, but I'd like to know that it is going to get done, and if in fact it is part of the requirement, then I'd like to hear some feedback from other commissioners as to if we should say, well, hey, this is a great idea. I'm all for it, but that's my one major concern.
Right.
With it. So I would yield to anybody else who has more information, more knowledge than I do on the subject. It looks like I have about as much knowledge on the subject. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of torn here, uh, because I, I, like I say, I'm the new boy on the block. I want to make sure that people follow the rules. That's all. And, you know, so that we can plan going down the street, and I don't know. I'm really torn right now whether I should say, you know, I'm, I'm all for this, but before I, we give you full approval, I will, I would like to see that lighting plan. So, you know, we know, then I can't, I know you cannot give all of that because you haven't built the new buildings yet, and there's no way to put lights on buildings that aren't there.
Right.
So.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could say something, uh, I'm, I'm happy to see that you're using this old Highway 46 tire. I'm very familiar with the area, uh, the business that was there. Uh, it's been closed for a few years now. I'm glad to see somebody moving in. Uh, so what, uh, Mr. Comer, what we're saying here is there has to be a light plan submitted, correct?
That's correct, according to our rules.
Okay, so I'd like to explain, you know, we're trying to do things by the rules here, and, um, it sounds to me like we would like to pass this tonight, but we need to see that light plan. Is that, is that, Mr. Chase, what you're getting at here?
Yeah.
Uh, what can we do? How can he get this light plan to us? Uh, do we have any suggestions to, to get him, give him to get this light plan together so we can get this approved for him? I'd like to work with him on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Steph?
Um, also kind of off the subject of the lighting, but in terms of the landscaping plan as well, that is by the book required by the zoning resolution. And so any relief from that, I believe, would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Alright, um, the, uh, general view of, if I can characterize it, the view of Commissioner Chase and, and Commissioner Berry is that the site plan rules in our, the site plan sets forth certain requirements for a site plan, and that includes a landscape plan. And the landscape plan isn't just a buffer. Um, if you look at the landscape regulations, it'll tell you exactly what needs to be shown. Um, and relief can be given for deviation from that plan, but it starts with submitting a plan and then asking for the relief. In terms of the lighting plan, the way it's normally complied with for a new building is the building is shown on the map, and the lighting that would be included is shown on the map and as well as its illumination. Those two items being absent, what I'm hearing from the commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the commission's not comfortable approving a site plan that's incomplete. Um, in the past, we have sometimes granted the ability to, uh, uh, is it table or is it postponed? They defer the item until next month, lets you put those two things together and bring them back with no prejudice. That's one of our options. The other option, of course, is that the commission could just deny for lack of a complete application. So, so a lot of times what we do is we turn that over to the applicant and ask what they would like to do.
Yeah, I think we'll just defer.
The applicant has said that, uh, he is willing to accept a deferral to next month to fulfill those items, and so I leave it to the commission for their will.
Yeah, I would make a motion to, uh, defer this until next month, when that, the, both of those plans can be resubmitted.
I would second.
It's been regularly moved and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Chase and seconded by Commissioner Berry to defer this item until next month's planning commission to allow the applicant to complete the application with a lighting plan and landscape plan. Any discussion?
Well, just chairman, I'll say since, since I have a feeling next month, the, I was like, for the benefit of the owner, I was probably going to put that toward the front of the agenda next month. Because I think when he presents us with this thing, he's going to bring about the proposal of BZA, the way of the buffer requirement, and lighting plan, that we can dispose of that, because some of the things will probably throw them next month. But having said that, I, I favor the disposal as the right and applicable thing to do for all parties involved.
Alright. Steph, is that possible to make sure that when we put our agenda together, we can put it first?
Yeah, we can make that the first item.
Mr. Chase, you accept that as part of your motion? Alright. Motion so amended?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Brother, or Commissioner Brown, go ahead. Discussion item?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of deferring this application to next month's meeting as specified in the motion, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seems like the ayes have it. Um, items three and four are both by the same applicant, but they are separate and distinct items that we need to take separate and distinctly. However, the traffic study for both of these items covers both, correct? Okay. Item number three, rezoning request for Clyde Jeanette B&amp;G Equipment and Supply, Tax Map 145, parcel 61.00, five acres, highways 46 South, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 Agriculture to C2 General Commercial, 7th District. Staff report?
The, the resounding request, like Mr. Comer said, for items three and four, they go together at the December 8th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. If you remember, uh, there was a site plan for B&amp;G Equipment Supply that was approved for the 13 and a half acre track directly south of this. It was already zone C2. When they got out there and started doing some sales work on it, they found out part of the ground is swampy. Uh, this is something they could have corrected, but when you figure in the cost, that become something that was not worth doing. Uh, they did the research. Of course, this is a prime area they want to be in. Properties to the north, Mr. Jeanette has two five acre tracks. They are zoned A1 agriculture. They are right there on the highway. You know, it's prime real estate, and they're able to work a deal. They went and checked the soil. The soils will work for what they want, and they would just have a little bit smaller scale than what they had brought back last time. Uh, I do have confirmation from Michael Rogers. There is both water and sewer available right there. Uh, and as you'll see, uh, this is also, they, they do the traffic study, and this is in City of Dixon's urban growth plan at some point in time. Charrington?
I have no additional comments. The request is dimensionally appropriate and is consistent with the plan.
What is the will of the commission?
I have a comment, question.
Commissioner Ferris.
Um, in our traffic study guidelines, it requires a cumulative impact projects list. Was a cumulative projects list given to the applicant for all of the work that's being planned around that area?
We don't know of anything at this time that's being done. We do know the state does plan to widen that to five lanes. That is in their near future plans.
Okay.
Um, this is in my district, and I think that this is a great development that will add to the commercial appeal of the area. I think it works very, very well. My main issue is boils down to one thing, and that is the traffic study. Um, this is heavy equipment rental, correct? That, that's what it's going to be used for?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Lots of skids here.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking trailers, we're talking dump trucks, we're talking. Okay, okay, alright. Um, in that, because there, there was.
Yes, yeah, Haynes, Sharon, and it's, it's mostly going to be rollbacks. There will be some heavier equipment coming in and be serviced and at the facility there and cleaned, et cetera, and it'll get back out to another job.
Okay.
Yeah.
My reason for asking is there was a couple of things that I think were missing from the traffic study. Can I defer to you, RJ, and you?
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Um, I'm sorry, your name again, sir?
Haynes.
Mr. Haynes, thanks. Um, the issue is this, um, it's not about the equipment that you have on site. It's about the nature of the vehicles that come and pick up the equipment and the supply. So for example, is most of, and, and you have some experience because you're moving to this location, right?
Sure.
So the, the, the types of vehicles that come in and get equipment and supply, are they mostly pickup trucks calling, you know, hauling drop trailers? Or are they semi trucks holding full on semi truck trailers carrying heavy equipment to and from construction?
Question, I can clarify. So there.
Thank you.
The supply is just more of the name. There is, it will not be, the general public, there will be no supply. This is a, this is a company that does, in fairness, lease to the general public. They, they don't, it doesn't really happen. So this is not like a, a local supply. They're going to be leasing to large GCs, grading contract, those kinds of things. So to answer your question directly, it'll be mostly rollback. So they mostly deliver these to the job sites, and then they stay at the job site for weeks or months at a time. Then they return and they're serviced, and then they're dispatched wherever else, or moved entirely to another state somewhere, depending upon where the need is. Yeah, because there's several of these scattered from Texas to North Carolina. So they just move it around as needed because they're based in Birmingham.
Got it. So how many, how often per day does a, does a, does a truck come in and pick up some equipment and haul it off to a job site?
So literally, there could be some days where there are none, and that's not abnormal, and then a busy day, maybe 10. And that would be mostly rollbacks. They would occasionally, in fairness, be an 18 wheeler, coming and going, but that is not the norm.
Okay, thank you for that. That's helpful because our traffic guidelines require a passenger car equivalency for larger vehicles that have a different impact on traffic, and there was nothing in the traffic study that addressed that. And, and, uh, your traffic engineer doesn't happen to be here tonight, does he?
No, they do not, yeah.
The what was, the traffic study largely complies with the guidelines. So there's about just a couple of questions that we need to do address to make sure we're clear. Um, for example, there is no category in the International Transportation Engineers Manual for construction equipment and supply. So, uh, the traffic engineer has used tractor supply store, which is within the retail uh, categories of the IT manual.
Got it.
And of course, your project isn't retail.
Yeah.
So we had some, we had, we have to kind of parse through that.
Sure.
I looked at the categories for industrial, and there's not a category that's clearly applicable to your use either.
Okay.
Um, so I'm personally satisfied that tractor supply is probably the closest we can get. And with your answer that the frequency of semi trailer, uh, trucks, I think I can be satisfied that a passenger or car equivalency isn't necessary for this traffic study.
Yeah, in all sincerity, tractor supply would have more cars coming and going in one day than this place will in probably a quarter. I mean, many, many months. Yeah, and there, and there, the, the passenger trucks that come and go or cars would be for the workers. And there'll probably be no more than five to 10 workers in there, depending upon what's on site.
And what is your general worker's workday, arrive and leave?
You know, probably would be like a seven to, to five, seven to four, plus or minus.
The reason I asked for that, our traffic study guidelines require a peak hour analysis during the noon hour, which your traffic study did not do.
Okay.
Um, and depending on the use, that could be a real problem, um, because we don't have any traffic information for the noon hour, which is required by our traffic study guidelines.
Okay.
Um, and what I would suggest is that if this project is approved tonight, or we're, we're only making a recommendation for approval. It ultimately goes to the commission. What I would suggest is if we recommend approval that you get with your traffic study engineer and say, can you quickly run a noon analysis before we go to county, county commission? That'll help a lot.
And it was, y'all saw it. It was done by Raimi Kemp, who's a large, you know, so they, they should have.
We've seen a lot worse traffic studies around here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Last, last issue is this, and this is as much for your, for you as for the commission. Um, the traffic study identifies in section five that the existing two-way left turn lane should be restriped at Site Access One into a dedicated left turn lane. Uh, now, when I see a traffic study saying should be, I'm saying, is that a mitigation measure or is that a recommendation? And is that something the commission should, uh, add as a condition of approval for this project? And of course, what would DOT say about it? Um, let me just first say that if this project were recommended for approval with the condition that that lane would be changed to a dedicated left turn lane, you have any problem with that?
Well, I guess I would throw that out to everybody. I don't.
T dot to determine.
T dot would have to determine it ultimately, yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I would be surprised if T dot, if, just I'll throwing this out loud here. I'd be surprised if T dot's going to do that with the expansion that they're getting ready to do.
Yeah.
So. They may do it after the road is redone.
Understood.
At this point, I could say we would take, we could take it under consideration and attempt, but if that was a condition, I, I don't, I don't know that it's going to work.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, let me point something out. This traffic study was performed on a retail business that will have much, much, much more traffic than this gentleman is going to have in his business. So I don't think that applies.
Yeah.
To this. I, I think, I, I think that's an all in void, honest, honestly, at this point.
Probably a fair estimation. Certainly, the trip generation of a tractor supply store is greater than what we're hearing tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that concludes my questions on the traffic study. Thank you for answering.
I, I will, I will point out one more thing. We've got another similar business, two years, which actually is a supply also on 46 Highway. It's going to see similar traffic. Honestly, my opinion, his location is a better location than that location is traffic wise.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the commission?
Um, I, you had a great deal of luck. Maybe somebody's watching over you in terms of being able to pick up that other parcel. I think that's great. So I would like to, and I, based on what we have learned tonight, um, that it is not comparable to tractor supply traffic. Um, I would be more than happy to, uh, motion for approval.
There is, is there a second?
I would second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner Chase, seconded by Commissioner Berry to, uh, recommend approval of the rezoning request for item three, Clyde Jeanette B&amp;G Equipment Supply. Any discussion? Hearing none, I think we do a roll call vote, since it's a legislative recommendation?
Yes. Todd Berry.
Yes.
Tina Ferris.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Todd Lindsey.
Yes.
Robert Quals.
Yes.
Tommy Brown.
Yes.
Jeff Chase.
Yeah.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan. Patrick Reagan.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Have to do the same, same thing for the next.
Alright. Item number four, rezoning request for Clyde Jeanette B&amp;G Equipment Supply, Tax Map 135, parcel 21.06, five acres, Highway 46 South, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 Agriculture to C2 General Commercial, 7th District. Again, this, um, item four is essentially related. It's another part of item three. And the traffic study that we just discussed is equally applicable to item four. Staff?
I mean, as you see on the plat, they're right next to each other. You know, they're going to make it one ton acre track, and it, you know, they're hoping to rezone them both and combine them together.
Commission?
Mr. Chairman, as because what we previously.
I have to correct you. I'm only a vice chairman.
You're the chairman. I, because what we're looking at is the same thing over again, essentially. I think that I would just, I just want to say, let's, the will of the commission, I think, is apparent, but let's vote on it for the record so that we can have it as part of the public record of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Still need a motion? Ah. So moved by Commissioner Quals and seconded by Commissioner Lindsey, uh, that we approve the recommendation for rezoning of the Clyde Jeanette B&amp;G Equipment Supply, item four. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Tina Ferris.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Todd Lindsey.
Yes.
Robert Quals.
Yes.
Tommy Brown.
Yes.
Jeff Chase. Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan. Patrick Reagan.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, motion carries.
Alright, thank you, Commission. Uh, that concludes all the items. I simply want to remind the, the working group on the R3 Moratorium, which I heard met tonight, which is great. Uh, you will meet again at 5:30 PM, uh, just before the next Planning Commission meeting to continue your work. Does any commissioner have anything to bring before us before we go on? This Commissioner Berry?
Mr. Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman, that is. Um, over the last several years, I feel the need, and I want to throw this out to the rest of the commission. Uh, I feel like it would be good if council were here at each of our meetings. Um, I don't know how we need to proceed with that, but I want to throw that out. Um, we, we've been in several situations. It would be nice if council was here with us as we make some decisions. So I would like for my constituents to consider that, uh, tonight.
Any other commissioner want to be heard on that?
Obviously, we would need a cost estimate for that, but I would tend to agree with Commissioner Berry's opinion that we're more likely than not, I would say, in this current environment to need counselor at the majority of the meetings. And it's probably worthwhile to arrange for all of them, even though tonight is probably a good example of when it wasn't, but I agree with Mr. Berry's sentiment and think that, you know, prudence is, is suggest that's the right course of action.
Yeah, that's, that's something we can do. If that's what you want, we could have them at every meeting.
Do we need to express our desire in that in terms of a motion and a vote, or can we just direct staff to?
You know, that's.
Confer with council and.
Yeah.
Request they be here.
We can redo that, yeah.
Okay, uh, for my own opinion, um, having practiced law a few years myself, uh, and worked in the municipal side, both on the public side and the private side, I think it is useful to always have, uh, counsel here. Uh, I'm not, I'm no longer an attorney. I'm not licensed practicing Tennessee, and so I can't give legal advice and don't want to. So let's have the record show that the commission has, has requested staff to request counsel to attend all of the planning commission meetings.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, moved, seconded, uh, and, uh, we don't need to vote to adjourn, do we? Alright, thank you, everybody. See you next time.